The lion in the side of that children.
They were little, they were little, they were little, they were little.
And their foot in the half of the tree and sauna under.
Ah, so.
Chit to tharola beti, rampam to gochana.
Chit to tharola beti, marivaan rampam to lage kosishna.
Terrible, terrible day. They used to invent as to how, with what novelty they could prosecute the Christians.
And Christ only Allah him singe champaalavaanadani, vinutamayana vidhanalu, a kuramayana kakeshamana, dharana, galpettava.
So that's how they used to crucify the prosecuted Christians.
Allah go, marie, apruna Christo, no, no, himselapala jishna.
I was full of spirit of God.
But he will act on the.
And I was communicating the sufferings of the apostles of old.
Ah, brahna, garamlo, na apostle, shremalu, okasari, gane, no, madhul jesundana.
I was talking about the Daniel, Shadrat, Mesek and Abedrius of old.
Daniel, Shadrat, Mesek, Abedrius, how they risked their life in order to make it. But this was a kapadukol, korakku, tamu yala, tamu pranavasayadum, tekinspenar.
Lion then is not an art of the thing.
When the simhamula guha ante, you have some.
The roaring lion, if you hear the roar of the lion.
That chinchu simha, simhamaka, carjana, we're winter.
You'll tremble and run from that place.
You're oneiki akkani, paripotarinka.
And also the fire.
At the, they got me.
They intensified fire.
Atni, you were, adikka, just now.
And those who were put Shadrat, Mesek and Abedrius, they got burnt and dead.
Shadrat, Mesek, Abedrius, they go, you ever ate, they are not in the body, they are. While they call, call.
Ah, atni, gunna, like, for, for, while they were burnt.
He'll, you, while, while, they're, 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 they're.
Ah, atni, gunna, like, for.
Atni, gunna, like, for.
Ah, by, they call, they call.
For, by, they, atni, gunna, by.
So, intense, it, ah, fire.
I signed all my children in the drawing room. My children in the drawing room.
I read out that promise that word in Acts fifteen twenty six.
Apostle Karam Padiyani Ruvayadavachna marikchadrichanu.
They had it in nineteen eighty, they were very small at that time.
They were only one or two years old when they came to me.
They had a message.
They had a message.
And they have been singing, they were busy in the work of the Lord.
They were very busy. They were very busy.
I wrote a letter.
I wrote a letter.
And I said, let not your heart be troubled.
My heart is troubled.
Earlier I have been working for a commercial organization.
This is what I want to do.
But everything on the earth is controlled by God.
Now I am going to serve Him. Now I am going to serve Him.
He will never let us down.
I am not going to let you down.
Have faith in God.
Believe in God.
With my son, writer's check.
I am not going to write a letter.
Papa, I knew one day you will do this.
Papa, if you do this, I will tell you.
And my sister's son Luke was there.
My son is there.
He got up and he was crying.
He was crying.
And he just hugging me.
He was crying.
Mama, I am proud of you because you obeyed God's will.
Mama, if you believe in God, you will be grateful.
Then I shared with the elders of the church, co-elders.
Then I shared with the elders of the church, co-elders. Then I shared with the elders of the church, co-elders. Then I shared with the elders of the church, co-elders.
They cried.
They cried.
What?
What?
You have a ring?
You have a ring?
High children you have, yeah?
You have a ring?
How do you know I don't have a ring? Nothing I have.
You have a ring?
How do you manage?
How do you manage?
I had God help me.
They had a question.
They glorified God, they cried both of them.
They had a question.
Lord, we thought we wanted God's judgment, but we never knew that one among us would become a god.
They had a question.
And they said, you tell the church, let them hear from the hard mouth what has happened.
You tell the church, let them hear from the hard mouth what has happened.
And then that day again I read that verse.
The last message.
Nineteen ninety-three, in the month of March.
The last message.
I think that was the eastern gate.
The eastern gate.
And then I. Yesterday.
Yesterday.
I think. And there, I read that verse, very verse.
The last message.
Acts fifteen twenty six.
Apostle Karam Padiyani Ruvayadavachna.
And then I started giving the message as the Lord led me.
The last message.
And then I brought it to the expected end as to how God holds it through that verse.
By the last message. How did you receive it?
I saw, shocked and surprised in the eyes of all who believed in the church.
In the eyes of all who believed in the church.
And our meeting was over.
The last message.
Everybody was talking, what is this?
This is what? The last message.
And one sister met my daughter.
She wanted to come here actually, she could not come, you would have seen her. She wanted to come here actually, she could not come, you would have seen her.
She told them, she told that lady, sister.
My daughter is here.
She wanted to come here actually, she could not come, you would have seen her.
She wanted to come here actually, she could not come, you would have seen her.
She told them, she told that lady, sister.
My daughter is here.
I am proud of my dad, he obeyed God's will.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
He became a north-north bowler.
He became a north-north bowler.
So like how many had a lot of doubt, how will he manage, how will he manage?
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
Now God himself has done great things for our family.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
Wonderful things have happened.
Wonderful things have happened.
My children have seen in their own eyes how God has trained us.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
Some have become post-graduates.
Some have become post-graduates.
Others graduates.
Others graduates.
And they are in a very high position in advertising world.
They are in a very high position in advertising world.
They got international award, they are known in the world of advertising, in the world.
They are in a very high position in advertising world.
Very often they are interviewed by television and newspapers also.
Very often they are interviewed by television and newspapers also.
That my children they used to say.
They used to say.
My father has sacrificed much because of good way of blessing.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
In a wonderful way God helped me to take that decision.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
And immediately I wrote a letter to all the seniors.
The seniors.
And Philip wrote back to say that J C Ram had already been trained, so let him take the role of Delhi from me.
So Philip gave the role of J C Ram. He chose Delhi.
But how I am there?
Now, how God fought me, what prompted me to take that extreme step is put in that song. Can I tell you the verse? What is your action? If you believe in God, you will be grateful. What is your action? I wrote, my action is. I wrote, my action is.
My action is.
My action is.
Because we were singing in the assembly, then I changed it to me.
The last message.
My action is. My action is. My action is. My action is. Prabhu Ezu Nishikarji. Prabhu Ezu Nishikarji. Sevo Levo. Sevo Levo. Aram Ovi Spaki. My action is. My action is. My action is. My action is. Like how God gave you that song.
At that time, our Bible study was Acts of the apostles. At that time, our Bible study was Acts of the apostles.
So I pick up certain instances of their participation, I have put them there.
So apostles came to me.
Oh, what I sacrificed they made in order to serve the Lord.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
It was a challenging song in our assembly at that time.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
Then I continued to serve the Lord.
Then I continued to serve the Lord.
Then God gave me another song.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
That is what I want to teach you now.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful. Now I am going to sing that song.
I am not going to play hard on him, it is very easy tune. If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
Seva Karana.
Sorry.
You can do it. Seva Cheya Naaku Ne Kuma. Prabhu Seva Marma Mu Naaku Te Lu Kuma. Seva Cheya Naaku Ne Kuma. Prabhu Seva Marma Mu Naaku Te Lu Kuma. Moche Chee Sinaseva Krhunaa Mu Ne Kuma. Moche Chee Sinaseva Krhunaa Mu Ne Kuma. Tinaa Iparu Akka Anupavamu Naakosaguma. Tinaa Iparu Akka Anupavamu Naakosaguma. Kaapika Mu Tocheva Cheya Naaku Ne Kuma. Seva Cheya Naaku Ne Kuma. Prabhu Seva Marma Mu Naaku Te Lu Kuma. Seva Cheya Naaku Ne Kuma. Prabhu Seva Marma Mu Naaku Te Lu Kuma. Samoyelu Chee Sinaseva Naaku Ne Kuma. Samoyelu Chee Sinaseva Naaku Ne Kuma. Pratidinamu Nishvaramu Nidipinha Cheyuma. Pratidinamu Nishvaramu Nidipinha Cheyuma. Nima Nira Mu Naaniva Sipasayuma. Nima Nira Mu Naaniva Sipasayuma. Seva Cheya Naaku Ne Kuma. Prabhu Seva Marma Mu Naaku Te Lu Kuma. Seva Cheya Naaku Ne Kuma. Prabhu Seva Marma Mu Naaku Te Lu Kuma. Yeliya Chee Sinaseva Prabhu Naaku Ne Kuma. Yeliya Chee Sinaseva Prabhu Naaku Ne Kuma. Panel Parva Akka Anupavamu Naakosaguma. Panel Parva Akka Anupavamu Naakosaguma. Nirmaya Mu Tocheva Cheya Naaku Ne Kuma. Nirmaya Mu Tocheva Cheya Naaku Ne Kuma. Seva Cheya Naaku Ne Kuma. Prabhu Seva Marma Mu Naaku Te Lu Kuma. Seva Cheya Naaku Ne Kuma. Prabhu Seva Marma Mu Naaku Te Lu Kuma. Now I need to repeat after me one line, I say, you repeat, last line you will sing like that.
If you repeat, I will sing.
We repeat the same line.
We repeat the same line. We repeat the same line. Hasmukh. That is.
Chirunav.
Chirunav. Chirunav. Santoshank.
Santoshank.
Ah. You can sing.
Ezu Nisheva Marma Mu Naaku Te Lu Kuma. Ezu Nisheva Marma Mu Naaku Te Lu Kuma. Nirmaya Mu Tocheva Cheya Naaku Ne 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 Kuma. Seva Cheya Naaku Ne Kuma. Prabhu Seva Marma Mu Naaku Te Lu Kuma. Seva Cheya Naaku Ne Kuma. Prabhu Seva Marma Mu Naaku Te Lu Kuma. And that is, that is my prayer.
That is my prayer.
That has been my prayer right from the time when God put me into His service.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
In a wonderful way God helped me.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
And I have tasted God's faithfulness.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
At the time you will be insufficient to share all these things now.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If Lord carries, if by come again in His will, then I will share.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
There are so many things to share.
There are so many things to share.
But I like to avoid by the team that we have.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
This much I want to tell you.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
My life is dotted with the word of God.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
One situation I will share with you.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
In two thousand nineteen.
In two thousand nineteen.
I was taken to Andaman. Andaman.
Andaman Deepal.
Port player.
Port player. Andaman Deepal.
Two thousand five I have been going there every year.
In two thousand five. Andaman Deepal. In two thousand five.
Yes, sir.
I was in Andaman.
And from Andaman I came to Madras.
I was in Andaman.
Then they took me to Kenya.
I was in Kenya. I was in Kenya.
There was a convocation.
I was in Kenya.
After those meetings, I was taken to a place called Attipattu near Madras. Some practice. North of Madras.
I was in Atthi Pattu. I was in Atthi Pattu.
All these long by road except Port Player, I went by here and came back to Madras. The rest of the journey was by car.
I was in Andaman. I was in Andaman.
Very tedious journey.
I was in Andaman.
And I came back to a guest house in Perambur Assembly in Madras.
I was in Andaman.
There is a guest room for me there.
I was in Andaman.
There is a guest room for me there.
I was in Andaman.
The brother who was helping me, he served me food.
I was helping him.
I was helping him. Then I ate food.
I was helping him.
Before going to bed.
I was praying like this.
I was praying like this. Lord, I am very much tired.
Oh, Prabha, I am tired.
I have done enough of job.
I have done enough of job.
I have done enough of job. I have gone to several places.
I have gone to several places.
I have reached the word of God.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
Now I am very much tired.
I am tired.
I am going to Delhi, I want to take rest.
I am going to Delhi, I want to take rest.
I am going to Delhi, I want to take rest. Oh, Prabha, I am tired. With these thoughts I slept.
I was tired.
And then woke up with the morning.
I was in Delhi.
That was eighteenth June.
That was eighteenth June.
That was my birthday.
That was my birthday.
And then someone, the brother who was helping me, I was helping him.
I was helping him.
Showed me a hot cup of coffee.
I was drinking coffee.
As I was sipping the coffee, I was drinking coffee. I asked him to read the word in that calendar today.
I asked him to read the word in that calendar today.
Two thousand nineteen.
Two thousand nineteen.
Eighteenth April.
Eighteenth, April.
Eighteenth June.
June, March.
This is the verse.
I was reading the calendar.
Roman chapter twelve verse eleven.
I was reading the calendar.
One and a half.
One and a half.
Roman chapter twelve verse eleven.
I was reading the calendar.
Not slothful in business, fermenting spirit, certainly the law.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful. Do you understand the relevance of that word?
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
Last night, what was my prayer?
I was in Delhi.
I was in Delhi. Lord, it is a big honor.
Prabha, I am tired.
I am very much tired.
I am tired.
Next morning, this is the verse that is there.
I was printing the calendar.
Not slothful in business, fermenting spirit, certainly the law.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful. Then I confessed before the Lord.
I was praying.
I was praying.
I was praying.
I was praying. I came in trade for me that day.
I was praying.
God guided me by His word.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
In many junctions of my life, God guided by His word.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful. That is the promise we have in Psalm thirty-two verse eight.
I will teach you, I will instruct you, I will guide you.
I will guide you.
I will guide you.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
So that is what you have done in order to me.
I was in Delhi.
I was in Delhi. And I obeyed him.
I was in Delhi.
That is why I am here today in my presence of the Lord.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful. Shall we talk about the Christians?
In the Teshmane.
Chapter four.
Four.
One.
One.
Furthermore, then we beseech you, brethren, and exhort you by the Lord Jesus, that as you have received of us, how we ought to walk and to please God, so you would abound more and more.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
God's purpose is that we must abound more and more in faith and also in the spiritual power and strength.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
Psalm ninety-two.
One and a half.
One and a half.
Verse twelve.
One and a half. Psalm ninety-two, verse twelve.
One and a half.
The writers shall flourish like the palm tree, he shall grow like a sardar in Lebanon.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful. So they thought they.
What is the question?
What is the question?
Hey, what is it? I am not sure.
Don't do that. In your eyes, you will spoil your eyes. You have increased in your height, spiritual height.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful. From height to height you should go.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
As the child is born.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
A small child.
A small child.
Daily you will find growth.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
One month, two months, three months, one year, second year like that.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful. The child grows.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
I remember one family in Delhi.
I was in Delhi.
I was in Delhi.
Other country.
I was in other country.
I was in other country.
And then she delivered a child of this length.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful. After nine months.
I was in Delhi.
And they were feeling shy to show the child to others.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful. If anybody wants to come and see the child, they will give some protection, we are not at home, we will be going out.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful. But the child started growing.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
The chicken poos. Now the boy is a bit, a kitchen half feet high.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
His name is Genovese, he is a very good president in New York.
He is a very good president in New York.
He is a very good president in New York.
He is a very good president in New York.
He is a very good president in New York. Six and a half feet height.
He is a very good president.
He is a very good president. Whenever I see him, I see him like this.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
So children as he grows, there is a great joy at home.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful. Lord Jesus Christ invented his wine.
Yes, Christ to Prabhu.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
He shed a lost drop of his blood.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful. So that you may be saved.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
And that you may grow in the grace of the Lord.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful. Spiritual advancement.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful. And that you may grow and walk in the.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful. Heights have got a special significance in the word of God.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful. There are two songs.
There are two songs.
Which were composed in nineteen eighty-three for Jehovah's Son.
Jehovah's Son.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful. Raksana.
Raksana.
And they are unantasthalamalapai.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
They are kids.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
Very good song.
Very good song.
They speak of the pinnacle salvation that will have scale and go higher and higher, higher and higher.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful. After the flood.
After the flood.
Where did they Noah's ark rest?
Noah was in the.
On Mount Ararat.
On Mount Ararat.
Not in some valley or plain.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
Let's say on Mount Ararat.
On Mount Ararat.
On Mount Ararat. On Mount Ararat, from the same ark, earmarked new line after the flood.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
Noah and his family came out of the ark on Mount Ararat.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
When God himself went to Moses.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
On Mount Hore.
On Mount Hore.
Again not in some valley and plain.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful. On Mount Hore, he said, I am God of Abraham, God of Jacob.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
Alive of him prayed and five came down from heaven.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful. Where did this happen?
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
On Mount Carmel.
On Mount Carmel.
And Solomon built a temple.
Solomon built a temple.
Where did he build?
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
On Mount Moriah.
On Mount Moriah.
Like that there are inevitable scriptural illustrations to tell us heights in Christ are essential for us to appropriate and enjoy and express through our right.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful. Second shangal.
Two and a half.
Two and a half. Chapter twenty-two.
One and a half.
One thirty-four.
One forty-four.
Second shangal, twenty-two, one thirty-four.
Two and a half.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
Heights are very important in Christian life.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful. You cannot be in the lowlands of Christian life and keep watching others climbing onto higher and higher.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful.
If you believe in God, you will be grateful. You should also climb higher and higher.
न्यु कुडा आय एतुकु इन्कायतुकु एक्कीवेल न्यु कुडा एतरके इनु एरिहोक्ता इरवैक
Now furthermore
इन्कामुन्द कुचुस्ते इनु मुन्द नोडु अदरे
Whenever God wanted to open up his heart to Moses
देवु एपुरैना मारी भोषिक तनु रुद्दम तर्वाल अनुकुन्न यावकालु देवर भोषिक तनु रुद्दम तेरे बेकम येत
When he wanted to convey to children of Israel
अनगा इस्ताल प्रजलु तो आयन चप्पाल नुकुन्नदी चप्पालनी अनुकुन्न इस्ताल जन्नात्रोटी एडुमात्न एडुबेकम ताकि तिरुकुन
He called Moses unto the mount
मारी भोषिक नु कुंडे की पाइकरान भोषिक बेटे एरिमे लेके बामले एडुम
That was fine in the actuality of nineteen, also, verse twenty-four, chapter twenty-four also
नितमाकान्डम पत्तमु ओच्चाय निर्माकान्डम रिवरी नाल्गो ओच्चाय नु ओमरंतान चुस्ता युमोचने कान्डी हत्तोमत्त इन्ने दाया युमोचने कान्डी इपत्त नाक्ने दद
Come unto the mount, come unto the mount
न्यु कुंडे एकीरा न्यु कुंडे एकीपो अंट न्युमति बेटा वन् हत्तीमायम ले गडुत्ता
And over thirty-four
नितमाकान्डम मोप्पीनाल्गो ओरु चुस्ता युमोचने कान्डमोत
Come unto the mount
मारी भोषिक बिलिस्टाडु न्यु कुंडे एक्की पाइकराम
Then he changed it unto the mount
अलागु तनु कुंडे एक्कीन आइथे बेटा वनेरी बंद
Then we read God descended and spent time with them
अक्कड़ा देवु मारी आ कुंडपैना देवु दिगोच्चि मारी भोषिक तो सम्बासिंच्चन आइथे बेटर द केडेकमतु देवर इरुदु बाल भोषिक नु के सम्बास
Where did Moses get his commandment?
मारी भोषिक तो आ पतियाकले एकड़को तोकिन इतिरे भोषिक नु के दशात्न
On the way to Horeh
आ होरेह कुंडमेला आ होरेह बेटर दमेले
Where did the disciples pray before the Holy Spirit around them? Where did they decide to pray before the Holy Spirit around them?
मारी सुताक्पु देवु वारु मिन्दीक राखमुन्पु मारी शिष्यु एकड़ प्रार्थन लेच्छन पश्चिदात्मोर और केतु पुपर्कितमुच्छ शिष्य रेले प्रार्थन मानिदार ने अप्परु मारी मेडकतिलो मेरिन पुण्डीयली
Where did the Lord transfigurate himself unto the disciples?
मारी प्रभु शिष्यले अदंगा मारी रूपांत्र पर्चाबटम एकड़ जरिनी इतिरे के कर्तनु मत रूपांत्र उस्मुद्द शिष्य
On a mount, that is called Mount of Transfiguration
आ पर्वताने मारी रूपांत्र कुंडांट अबेटा वने रूपांत्र बेटा बाल गडुत्ता
So like this, there are inevitable illustrations in the world of God
इल्ला देवनी वाक्यलु लेखले नी गुस्तान तरु गुस्ता इतिरे देवर वाक्यलु लेखविल्ला गुस्तान तरु नोडु
You ought to go higher and higher, higher and higher in your spiritual life
न्यात्मय जीवतुमुलो न्यु एतु इन्कायतुकु इन्कायतुकु एक्की पोदुन्द नामे जीवनदले बाल जास्त एतरवा एतरवा होक्ता इरवैक
It is only when you go higher and higher, you will have the glimpses of the glory of God
न्यु एपुरै त्यालान्दी एत्ताइनस्थलमु एक्की वेल्ता उन्द अपुरै देवनी महिमायोक्ता मच्चुन चुस्ता उन्त इतिरे याव एतरवा होकुत्ते यु महिमायोक्ता मच्चन नोडतायकि टित्ते नु
Then I was in NC
ने नीसिसल नु अप्पु नान नीसिसल इरुवा
We take it to the miniature range where we have a fire
मारुम कालचेन Fire फायरिंग नाने कालचेन अभ्यासुच्च नान्ती मिनिएचर रेंज की दिसकेल नान वेलु सुनु देकु मिनिएचर रेंज मदागले कर्मुन ओक्त
Yes, fifteen kilometers away from Kerneval City, all the way to Dronachalam, you will find one Jagannath Ghat, very big mountain
कर्नलुन्दी द्रोनाचलमले दारिलो पदिन किलोमीटरलो मारी जगन्नाथ गाट अनुक पेत्तक कुंडा कान्विश्न अनुन द्रोनाचलम अनुन द्रोनाचलम यानु मदागी पदिन किलोमीटरले मत कान्ते नम्मिके
And before you could start firing
मारी अला कालचेनम कालचेन तर्क मुन्द इतिरे शुरुकितमुच्छे
We have to install red flags all around that area
आ प्रांतमंतकलो एरो चेंडालु में बिट्टल आ प्रांतलुला दोजावना केम्पला दोजान इरवैक
Let some shepherds come on the crossway of fire
लेगपोते मारी कापर ओच्चस्तरु मारुम कालचेन काल्पुनुम जन्नोच इल्ला रुबर्बोर्तारे नाव सुरुवत्त सुर्द गेमत्त ओरुमत सत्तो उत्त
After installing all the flags around that area, one half cadre has to take the red flag, climb onto the mountain, onto the top, and put there also
इपुडु अला आ प्रांतमंतकलो एरो चेंडालु अकड़ाकड़ा बेटिन तर्वाता ओका नीसिसी कडेटु ओका एरो चेंडा दिसकुनी कुंडा पाइक एक्की कुंडा सिकराले बेटाल इल्ला रा प्रांत ईट्टे मेले उबर्न मात्र तौरुकुन्द होगे बेटर दमेले सिकरमु मेले आवु केम्प आकिर्वा दोजान इरवैक
Every time when I went there,
ने एपुरैना कुड़िकिल्लम्ड यावकालु नाने लोकुवा I used to avoid looking into the eyes of the captain मारी कैप्टन कल्लल्लो चुडकुन्द नुन्द मत कैप्टन नु कन्नली नोलार इरुवत चूस्ते आडु गिलिस्ताड चूस्ते आडु नु गिलिस्ताड नोड़ते एलिन नु करुत्ता
Who will flag this mountain?
ई कुंडा इ पर्वत ओरुस्ता इपुडु ई बेटा परुकुन्ना यार उत्त
You have khaki uniform
माकु काकी युनिफॉर्म स्तरु काकी युनिफॉर्म गुडुत्ता
That started Well, start to do.
Ah, Manchi, Ganjibetti. Ganjibetti, Eri, Etra, Sabu, BM, Ganji. Sabu, Sabu, Ganjibetti, Na, Khaki.
After the pant is pressed, the pant will stay, stand, if you keep it there, the pant will stay there.
Ganjibetti, Na, Pant, Ela, Dispende, Pant, Alag, Nilbodak, Adha. Ganjibetti, Na, Pant, Devu, Ha. Ancha, Yaavag, Yaavag. Adiri, Eta, Niluttha, Da.
And then, And where it?
Devu, Then, Esku, Nopudu. That, Na, Madan, Ha, Kunnad.
Well, not sit any way, let it get scrambled.
Ni, Yekka, Pucho, Eta, Nali, Pota, Eka. Eka, Eli, Guda, Gudukka, Agar, Dilla, Adu, Matha, Mu, Ta.
We, Punish, Our, The Main, Day, The.
Eta, Kanta, Ah, Khaki, Batta, Ganjibetta, Ra, E, Uda, Nodu. Here, Khaki, Batta, Ganjibetta, Adiri, Eri, Ebe.
You can imagine what would happen in the middle of this sunshine.
Sure, And, Ah, Enda, Middle, Copper. Ah, Endakalam, Majalo, Ah, Vedi, Enda, Vedi, Elam, Tha, Alachinje. Artha, Eki, Bisilali, Madan, Adali, Avani, Dhirute, Nodu, Kalanali. Bunka, Bunka, Come, To, No. Knock, Lanta, Baka, Baka, Apistha, Adha. Here, Jivita, And, Ah, Having, Shack, Behind, Having Shack, And Then A Cap, And Then A, Ankle Boot, And Then Rifle. Ah, Mari, Boot, Unda, Having Shack, Unda, Oka, Backpack, Unda, Di. Rifle, Unda, Di.
And Rifle, Unda. It's all that I have to, I have to climb.
We, Done, It, Move, Gundo, Parvatham, Ekka, Mem. Ewelo, Guda, Horuttha, Nau, Matha, Betta, Ne, Eribeh.
I will avoid.
Ne, Eri, Oda, Niro, Justa, Adha. Nana, Eri, Eri, Justa, Di.
One, One day, He called me by my name.
Kani, Oka, Ro, Na, Pair, Wait, Nenu, Will. Both, Eta, Nana, Messer, To, Karidida.
Jai, Chandra, Rao, It Is Your Heart Today.
Jai, Chandra, Rao, Ero, Nu, Parvatham, Ekka, Li, Ni, Ni, Ero, Anna. Jai, Chandra, Rao, Ni, Sutu, Mathi, Ni, Ho, Gabi, Betta, Ne, Eribeh.
He gave me the flag.
Ah, Ero, Chenda, Nakichna. Kempu, Chenda, Oda, Potidara, Nodu.
Indian, Ke, He, Martra, Nakalpa.
Ya, Chiala, Chawala, Ya, Ma, De, Ya, Uda, Eri, Eko.
There is a command, Eta, Ya, Ya, Ya.
Ya, Ya, Ma, De, Ya, Edo.
The flag, Started climbing on that mountain.
Sure, What, Eka, Ero, Chenda, Diskuna, Parvatham, Ekka, Amazetta.
They, They.
Parvatham, Ne, Eru, Pa, Eri.
They are, Kind, Pushes, Ah, Kondai, Ekka, Da, Eri, Edo, Unta, Mulla, Padalu.
Betta, Ne, Eri, Eri, Edo, Da, Eri, Ela.
Bob, Dog, Sandi, Eri.
Eta, Gudlu, Gudutai, Padavada, Ra, Lu. Padavada, Mucha, Kalu, Gudu.
And then, Make, Make, Come On, Make A Bed, Bed, Onto The Top, Have Some.
Yeah, My, Commanding Officer, Aka, Art, Niche, Aka, Waiting, Aka, What, Eka, Niki. Nenu, Yedu, Mark, Mark, Air, Part, Ches, Gundo, Pike, Eka, Ta, Uda. Demand, Officer, Eno, Da, Eka, Gudu, Da, Ah, Mark.
Why, Like, He Is On The Top.
Shivariki, Ah, Parvatham, Shigaram, Eri, Kuda. Gure, Eka, Parvatham, Shigaram.
And then I installed the flag.
Ah, Chenda, Kas, Digo, Kuduna. Ah, Chenda, Vana, Na, Amad, Da.
And wipe my sweat.
Nah, Chavatan, O, Ches, Nek, Nek.
And looked around, And I looked around.
Taravata, Okka, Saari, Atu, Chuttu, Chesna.
What, What a spectacular sight it was.
Ah, Eta, Chakkari, Dursa, Edi. Eto, Chenna, Eri, Dursa.
Yet, Ah, Colonel, Was, At My Sight.
Colonel, Town, Anda, Bada, Na, Dursi, Spastanga, Karavista. Na, Bada, Bada, Dursi, Spastanga, Eri. Rendosamile, Gudzu, In The Heart Of The City. Mari, Kondai, Colonel, Bada, Ma, Adi, Guduna, Rendosamile, Gudzu. Kondai, Gudzu, Undi. Matha, Rendosamile, Rendosamile. Da, Rendosamile, Kondai, Gudzu, Eri. Tungabadra, Eri, Wa, Wa. Da, Kattu, Wa, Ches, Eri, Tungabadra, Nadi, Chakkaga, Par, Partha, Undi. Da, Kattu, Wa, Tungabadra, Nadi, Harita, Chenna.
What a wonderful sight it was.
Eta, Atputa, Maina, Dursa, Karavista, Undi. Eto, Atputa, Madak, Dursa, Eka, Noduta.
Then I said to my son.
Appedu, Mari, Nata, Nenu, Na, Nenu, Ches, Nukda. Ah, Aga, Nana, Nodu, Eri, Eri, Eri.
Yeah, I wish that I had come here every time.
Are, Prithisari, Chodak, Ochunde, Eta, Ba, Unde, Eri. Prithisari, Sareke, Boru, Chana, Eri.
What a thing I have missed.
Inta, Manchi, Dursa, Nenu, Nenu, Ches, Ches, Eri. Just, Don't, Dursa, Eri, Na, Na, Tapisku, Eri.
That is what it is. Alag, Unda, Di. And then you will grow higher and higher, you will have the wonderful glimpses of the glory of God.
Ni, Ettaeina, Sthalaki, Ekkiveela, Etaeina, Sthalaki, Ekkiveela, Eri. Devu, Ni, Mahi, Vano, Alag, Machu, Machu, Chesna. Ni, Etterava, Sareke, Ho, Kiruva, Ah, Devu, Mahi, Mahi, Jast, Jai, O, Ta, Eri.
May God enable us to go higher and higher in our spiritual life.
Mar, Atme, Chitunglo, Manu, Guda, Eka, Ettaeina, Mari, Ettaeina, Sthalam, Etkunat, Ga, Devu, Manu, Samyam, Che, Eka. Kamate, Chitunglo, Ches, Jast, Jai, Beru, Eka.
You are not content to be in the lowlands of life.
Here, Pallaprantalo, Kindamun, Matram, Undi, Akkada, To, Samkriti, Padakani. Yaavu, Madan, Prantali, Kerak, Eri, Alli, Matra, Santukru, Unda, Eri.
When Lavan was being rescued from Shodhaman Gomara, Mari, Ah, When Lo, Sorry, Lot, When Lot Was Being Rescued From The Shodhaman Gomara.
Yepreena, Mari, Lot, Shodhaman Gomara, Undi, Bidi, Bich, Padadu. Yaavagadu, Lot, Shodhaman Gomara, Bidi, Sal, Padid, Da.
Angel, Chal, Saying, Ah, Devu, La, Ta.
Devu, La, Ta.
Go onto the mountain.
Ni, Parvatham, Eri, Eri, Ni, Betta, Ne, Eri, Then, Lot, Che. Lot, Attadu. Lot, Eru, Ta.
I cannot go onto the mountain, I go to the spring.
Nenu, Parvatham, Eka, Eri, Ni, Madan, Uda, Eta, Nattad. Nana, Betta, Ne, Eri, Oda, Madan, Ho, Gudut, Eri, Madha.
It appeared, That is a hope, That is the sign of life which we are living.
Sure, And, Mari, Yela, Unda, Eta, Ma, Jeevan, Shaili, Jeevan, Vidhan, Uda, Alag, Unda. Yaavu, Dhirute, Eri, Jeevan, Shaili, Guda, Eri, Eta, Eri.
Many of us have to confess, We are still in the lowlands of our spiritual life.
Mar, Atme, Chitunglo, Eka, Manu, Pallaprantalo, Ya, Madan, Prantalo, Undi, Potunna, Manu, Sangat, Opukavasite. Ni, Atme, Chitunglo, Eri, Enu, Mathu, Madan, Eri, Ete, Ema, Eri.
May God help us to go higher and higher in our spiritual.
Ayte, Ma, Atme, Chitunglo, Manu, Ettaeina, Sthalaki, Mari, Ettaeina, Sthalaki, Eka, Nodu, Eka, Nodu, Devu, Manu, Samyam, Che. Atme, Chitunglo, Eri, Jast, Eta, Eka, Ho, Gudut, Eka, Devu, Namake, Sahaya, Madali.
So that you could have the glimpses of the glory of God.
That, Va, Devu, Ni, Mahimay, Okka, Machu, Uda, Chodak. Adiri, Devu, Mahimay, Okka, Machan, Jast, Jai, Nodika, Eka.
Now again, See, That, First, John, Ian.
Mar, La, Sir, Chudama, Mad, Mad, Test, Nek, Eri.
Chapter four, verse one.
Rendosamile, Rendosamile. Mathu, Nodu, Gudu, Madal, Ne.
That he ought to walk and to please God, and so he would abound more and more.
Ni, Yela, Gudukondu, Devu, Santosa, Parshavali, No. Ma, Vell, Ne, Ches, Gundo, Ni, Anta, Kantakku, Abirutti, Undavali, Nani. Ni, Eka, Nedu, Devu, Nud, Mitch, Sabeko, Adu, Nud, 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 Eka, Nud, Eka, Nud, Eka, Nud, Eka, Nud.
Abounding in love more and more.
Prema, Yandu, Anta, Kantakku, Abirutti, Pandali. Preeti, Astakash, Abirutti, Unda, Eka.
According to Roman chapter five, verse five.
Roman, Rashma, Eka, Aido, Aido, Prakaram. Roman, Parthur, Eka, Aido, Aido, Prakaram.
He shed a broad, His love in our hearts.
Ah, I, Tan, Prema, No, Ma, Huddam, No, Kumari, Snad. Adha, Parity, Eri. Adha, Ma, Preeti, Eros, Ma, Huddam, Dharavala, Sridi, Da.
Now, That love, That we have received from Him, Should be reflected to the whole world.
Yepredu, Ah, Kumari, Chavadi, Na, Prema, Aragam, Ma, Huddam, No, Kumari, Chavadi, Na, Prema, Lo, Gadi, Eka, Uda, Dari, Ches, Bich. Here, Huddam, Eri, Sridi, Anda, Preeti, Alla, Lo, Eka, Ete, Eru, Sa, Eka.
That how he should abound more and more in love.
Atlu, Prema, No, Guda, Manu, Anta, Kantakku, Abirutti, Pandali. Artha, Preeti, Eri, Guda, Astakash, Abirutti, Unda, Eka.
First, John, Ian.
First, Test, Nek, Eri.
First, John, Ian, Chapter three, verse twelve.
Rendosamile, Rendosamile. Rendosamile, Rendosamile.
And the Lord make you to increase and abound in love one toward another, And toward all men, Even as we do toward you.
Ma, Tan, Devu, Nentam, Ni, Huddam, No, Parishuddha, Visiyamai, Anindam, Anindam, Ene, Ene, Ah, I, Tripest, Ei, Mem, Mi, Edala. Yela, Gud, Prema, No, Abirutti, Ponni, Vatil, Uda, Namo, Alag, E, Miru, Nuno, Wakani, Edala, Wakadu, Nuno. Manushil, Andar, Edala, Prema, No, Abirutti, Ponni, Vatil, Uda, Prabhu, Daech, Enu, Ga, Ka. Ni, Mal, Ema, Preeti, Eko, Ha, E, Ni, Ma, Preeti, Ebo. Obra, Mele, Obra, Eri, Ella, Manushil, Mele, Agar, Eri, Undi, Atte, Eka, Wa, Gud, Eka, Karthan, Oni, Praisali.
Chapter four.
Rendosamile. Rendosamile.
Verse nine and ten.
Tom, Edi, Padivasna. Tom, Tha, Pochna, Gud.
But as such in brotherly love, He need not, That I write unto you, For, Ye, Your results are taught of God, To love one another. And indeed, He do it toward all the brethren, Which are in all nature, But, Who beseech you, brethren, That you increase more and more.
Sahodar, Prema, No, Guchi, Ni, Gud, Ra, Akkara, Edo, Ni, Wakani, Nokadu, Preame, Chitaku, Devu, Nuch, Ete, Eri, Eri, Eri. Alag, Uda, Ne, Ma, Sutu, Ne, Andant, Eta, Una, Sahodar, Andar, Ni, Ni, Preame, Chitunna, Ruh. Sahodar, Ara, Ni, Prema, Yandu, Mari, Eko, Abirutti, Undu, Ches, Uda, Vali, Nani. So, Darsa, Visya, Dali, Ni, Me, Gud, Bar, Edo, Avash, Edo, Obra, Obra, Preeti, Sabek, Updesh, Eno. Ni, Ve, Devu, Eta, Undi, Daur, Aki, Tu, Samasta, Me, Eka, Dona, Dal, Eri, Va, So, Dhar, Eri, Preeti, So, Aki, Di. Adaru, So, Dhar, Eri, Ni, Preeti, Eri, Enu, Ech, Uda, Bar, Eka, Nid, Ni, Ma, Prabod, Ese, Ete, Devu.
Ah, You have love for one another, No doubt about it.
Ni, Wakani, Nokadu, Preame, Chitunna, Ruh, Edo, Sande, Eme, Edo. Obra, Mele, Obra, Preeti, Di, Eri, Sande, Eme, Edo.
But it should abound more and more.
Ayte, Ni, Prema, Yandu, Mari, Eko, Abirutti, Pandali. Al, Preeti, Eri, Eno, Jast, Jai, Abirutti, Unda, Eka, Ema, Eka.
And he loved us.
Ah, I, Ma, Preame, Chitunna, Ega. Ah, Ta, Ma, Preeti, Ma, Ega.
So, He should love others.
Na, Gud, Eka, Eri, Preame, Ches. Na, Gud, Eka, Eri, Preeti, Sabek. Now, See, First, John, Chapter three, verse eki. Sure, And, Mad, To, Hano, Rendosamile, Rendosamile. Madal, Eo, Hano, Mu, Neta, Had, Nand, E, Uda.
My little children, Let us not love in the world, Neither in tongue, But indeed, And in truth.
Chinapil, Eri, Ara, Ma, Tath, Nuno, Na, Kuth, Nuno, Ka, Ka, Kriya, Tono, Satyam, Tono, Preame, Tamu. Priyara, The, Makale, Na, Bar, Ma, Tind, Da, Eri, Bayu, Pachara, Dind, Da, Eri, Preeti, So, Aki, Eri, Par, Adu, Ni, Ma, Preeti, Eo, Kuth, Eri, Satyam, Eri, Thora, Eka.
Chapter four, one twenty.
Mad, To, Hano, Na, Kuth, Eri. Madal, Eo, Hano, Na, Neta, E, Pad, Uda.
Kindly have patience to look into the world of God, please.
Kabadi, Daech, See, Devu, Waake, Ches, Eta, Eka, Gosh, Hope, Ete, Ches. Da, Ma, Devu, Waake, Eri, Eri, Disch, Udu, Eka, Sahane, Edu, Padu.
If you say, I love God, And hate his brother, He is a liar, For, He is that love is not his brother, Whom he has seen. How can he love God, Who he has not seen?
Mad, To, Hano, Na, Kuth, Eri. Evade, Eno, Nenu, Devu, Ni, Preame, Chitunna, Eri, Chespe, Tal, Sahodar, Ni, Dves, Ech, Neda, La, Ath, Abati, Gud, Agu, Nuno. Ta, Nud, Chuch, Eri, Tal, Sahodar, Ni, Preame, Paniva, Dhu, Ta, Nud, Chud, Eri, Devu, Ni, Preame, Pal, Edo. Obra, Ta, Devu, Nud, Preeti, Ete, Edo, Eri, Tal, Sahodar, Dves, Ete, Eri, Ah, Nud, Sulu, Eri, Na, Eri, Ta, Nud, Kandir, Eri, Tal, Sahodar, Ni, Preeti, Ete, Edo, Ta, Nud, Kana, Eri, Devu, Ni, Preeti, Eta, Edo.
In the fellowship, Sahavas, Eka, Lo.
Sahavas, Eka, Eri.
The one that cements us together in the fellowship, And brings out the divine heavenly unity is love for one another.
Aralo, Sammanamayana, Deva, Sammanamayana, Aikata, Ma, Andar, Udu, Kudukunna, Pudu, Ma, Andar, Atukapet, Eri, Eta, Ete, Adi, Kevalam, Prema. Here, Eka, Deva, Chandra, Eka, Mathu, Na, Eri, Udu, Na, Shiri, Ruwa, Ga, Na, Want, Eka, Eri, Eri, Devu, Eri, Preeti, Eri.
We are the body of Christ.
Ma, Huddam, Christ, Eka, Shiri, Eri, Ena, Ah, Christian, Shiri, Eri, Eka, Devu.
And you read first question, chapter twelve.
Mad, To, Kor, Tila, Kup, Pan, Nid, Uda, Surt, And, Mad, To, Kor, Nud, Hana, Nand.
They explain at length, Paul explains at length.
Paul, Eto, Vipulanga, Chala, Viharanga, Rast, Anta. Gola, Nesto, Vero, Wa, Eri, Eba, Eta.
There are many members, but one body.
Avay, Ula, Ne, Eka, Mu, Eta, Shiri, Ema, Kati. Anga, Anga, Ech, Ei, Ero, Devu, Matra, One.
And see the hand of that body.
Ah, I, Ah, Shiri, Ema, Sris, Ema, Ash, Shere, Sris, A, Eta.
And the signals come from the body to the member from the body.
Yepredu, Ah, Ah, Shiri, Ema, Kise, Sucha, Nalu, Shiri, Ema, Avay, Ula, Gud, Andu, Tante. Here, Eka, Shir, Eka, Eka. Ah, Sris, Undi, Shiri, Ema, Unda, Avay, Ula, Gud, Sucha, Andu, Tante. Ah, Shiri, Ah, Sris, Ender, Devu, Eka, Eka, Ero, Sucha, Ero, Bort, Eri.
As he obeyed those signals.
Ah, Sucha, Ero, Gud, Eru, Eru, Eta. Ah, Sucha, Eri, Eka, Ula, Eka, Eba.
Then you are able to do various activities in your life.
Mari, Ni, Chitunglo, Eri, Eru, Creel, Fun, E, E, E. Ni, Je, Eri, Eri, Eka, Ero, Creel, Eri, Ema, Eta.
So, it is the love of the Lord will cement us together in the fellowship, So that we may righteously serve the Lord for the glory of God.
Kabadi, Ah, Devu, Ni, Prema, E, Mar, Andar, Ni, Atukapet, E, Mari, Devu, Ni, Mahimay, E, Kalisi, Panijesi, Parichari, Esi, Eri, Eka, Sahaya, Eta. Nodu, Devu, Preeti, Eri, Mel, Eri, Andi, Gud, Mathu, Se, Ers, Am, Eka, Mahimay, Ema, Eri, Eta.
Love, Cover, Eto, Sin, Prema, E, Eka, Pap, Ero, Eka, Eta.
Preeti, Eri, Eka, Pap, Ero, Ema, Uch, Eta.
Read Roman chapter fourteen, verse one.
Roman, Rashma, Eka, Pad, Na, Kati, Ech, Eta.
Roman, chapter fifteen, verse one.
Roma, Padiyamu, Kati, Ech, Eta.
And Galatians, chapter six, verse one.
Galatians, Aro, Kati, Ero. Galatians, Aro, Kati, Ero. Galatians, Aro, Eta, Unda, Uda, Prakaram.
You will know how you have to treat those who are weak in the fellowship.
Sahavas, Elo, Pallah, Eel, Eina, Eri, Patla, Ni, Yela, Medhul, Kova, Eta, Eka, Karthan, Ese. Here, Samasa, Eri, Pallah, Ener, Eka, Pak, Eri, Yaavu, Eta, Or, Baka, Nodu, Gud, Eka.
You can deal with the fellow brethren, It is only because of love that you have true courage.
Mari, Christ, Ees, Nand, Dun, Prema, No, Bati, E, Ni, Sahodar, Eto, Medhul, Kala, Eka. Christ, Ees, Nal, Eri, Preeti, Eda, Ni, Ma, Sahodar, Ni, Preeti, Eda, Thora, Eru, Eta.
Otherwise, There would be division among people of God.
Lega, Potay, Devu, Pras, Eri, Mathi, Ero, Viveda, Viveda, Eru, Eta. Here, Devu, Eri, Jem, Eri, Mathu, Viveda, Viveda, Ero, Eru, Eta.
Lack of love, bringing out division.
Prema, Eri, Eta, Eme, Viveda, Ero, Dar, Ese. Here, Preeti, Eri, Ela, Eru, Eka, Eri, Viveda, Eka, Dar, Eru.
When they don't have love, you will lose respect for each other.
Ni, Gud, Prema, Eka, Potay, Wakari, Wakari, Eri, Mari, Adu, Gud, Potunna. Here, Preeti, Obra, Mele, Obra, Eri, 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 Eta.
There is a song, By the Jordan Khan, Composed many years ago.
Sahodar, Jordan Khan, Eka, Satsal, Eka, Eka, Pa, Ech, Eta. Rendosamile, Rendosamile, Eka, Vers, Eri, Ete, Matha, Eri, Eri, Eta.
In that, What I do, What I do, Like This.
And, Ero, Eka, Watch, Eri, Ela, Undi. Adri, Ero, Eka, Watch, Eri, Eri, Eta, Eka.
Karamuru, Kallavu, Kalayin, Chale, Ewu. Karamuru, Kallavu, Kalayin, Chale, Ewu. Kalayakane, Kariya, Munmu, Chale, Ewu. Kalayakane, Kariya, Munmu, Chale, Ewu. Hacula, Sanghame, Prabhu, Nishan, Eram. Andaya, Nata, Puna, Ne, Bun. Andaya, Nata, Puna, Ne, Bun. Chera, Sahina, Munro, Sarva, Namo, Nidna. Chera, Sahina, Munro, Sarva, Namo, Nidna. Sevalo, Prabhu, Pa, Ne, Puna, Ne, Bun. Sevalo, Prabhu, Pa, Ne, Puna, Ne, Bun. Hacula, Sanghame, Prabhu, Nishan, Eram. Andaya, Nata, Puna, Ne, Bun. So, this is the body.
Kabadi, This, Shiri, Ema, Adiri, This, Shiri, Ema.
He is the head.
Ah, I, Sris, Eru, Ah, I, Sris.
Head controls the movements of the body.
Mari, Shiri, Eka, Kal, Eka, Ene, Guda, Sris, E, Nian, Trist, Undi, Mathu, Shiri, Eri, Eri, Chal, Eri, Eta.
As his body constructively obediently responds to the call of the head, we function properly.
Shiri, Ema, Nirmana, Atpakam, Vidhan, Elo, Vidhaya, Vidhan, Elo, Sris, Eko, Eru, Eta, Eri, Ei, Shiri, Ema, Anta, Guda, Sarika, Parichasi, Eta. Here, Eka, Shiri, Eru, Eri, Ella, Eri, Nirmana, Mathu, Eri, Sris, Eri, Ula, Eka, Matra, Ers, Am, Eru, Eta.
We have to remind ourselves.
Manu, Manu, Dini, Na, Kam, Ees, Kala. Nam, Na, Vidhan, Nam, Eka.
We are the body of Christ.
Ma, Huddam, Christ, Shiri, Eri, Ena. Na, Christian, Shiri, Eri, Eka, Devu.
So, we have to share God's love among us.
Kabadi, Devu, Ni, Prema, No, Manu, Eri, Eru, Panch, Gundo, Uda. Devu, Preeti, Eri, Na, Na, Mathu, Eri, Na, Panch, Gundo.
It is the love of the Lord will bind us together by the power of the living God.
Jeevan, Eri, Devu, Eka, Shakti, Eta, Kevalam, Ei, Prema, Matram, Eri, Manu, Bandam, Ero, Bandich, Eta. Jeevan, Eri, Devu, Shakti, Eta, Kevalam, Preeti, Matram, Eri, O, Bandam, Eta, Eka, Bandam, Eta, Eka, Eta.
Often, I used to think, Why God has an example to our body?
Here, Char, Tar, Chuk, Alo, Ches, Ese, Eta, Eno, Mari, Shiri, Ema, Gud, Ech, Eta, Eri, Edo, Devu, Ches, Eta, Eri. Avag, Avag, Matha, Alo, Ches, Mar, Eri, Shiri, Ero, Gud, Eta, Eka, Eka, Eka.
So, that in day to day life, We may observe it, Eka.
Edo, Kanta, Ma, Dina, Dina, Anu, Dina, Chitunglo, Dini, Gaman, Ech, Eri, Eka, Eru, Eka, Eri. Anu, Dina, Jeevan, Eta, Eri, Gaman, Ech, Eru, Eka, Eka, Eka.
You will find in a given situation, How the whole body functions together as well oil emission.
Sure, And, Eka, Koni, Par, Sit, Elo, Shiri, Ema, Eta, Panch, Ese, Eta, Eka, Machine, Chakkaga, Oil, Pust, Eta, Anta, Nian, Tral, Panch, Ese, Ero, Ala, Panch, Ese, Eri, Shiri, Eri, Eru, Eka, Eri, Eka, Ers, Am, Eta, Eri, Edo, Eta, Eka, Eri, Eka, Ers, Am, Eta, Eri.
Sometimes, we get itching.
Konis, Eri, Dor, Eka, Eta. Eka, Eri, Eka, Eta.
Dor, Eka, Eri, Wrong word, colloquial word, Jilla, Jilla, E.
Dor, Eta, Dor. Here, Eka, Eta, Eka, Eta, 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 Eta.
Jilla, Jilla, Eta, Eka, Konis, Eta.
Ah, Eka, Eta, Eta, Eta.
And that Jilla, Age, Place, Is Such A Place, You Can't Reach Your Hand.
Ah, Jilla, E, Sthalam, Eka, Eta, Eta, Ni, Chai, Andani, Sthalam, Eka, Eta. Ah, Eka, Eta, Eri, Eka, Eri, Ho, Gula, Eta. Ah, Eka, Eta. Ah, Eka, Eta. Ni, Ah, Eka, Eta, Eri, Edo. Ah, Eka, Eta.
It's such a place, You Can't Reach Your Hand.
Kabadi, Ni, Chai, Andani, Sthalam, Eka, Jilla, Eta, Eta, Eta. Ni, Eka, Eri, Eka, Eri, Eka, Eta.
Signal, Come From The Head, Left Hand, Come On. He, He, Neither Will Help Me.
Yepredu, Medhul, Eto, Sucha, Eta, Eta, Edo, Eka, Jilla, Eka, Eta, Eka, Eta, Eka, Eta. Here, Eka, Medhul, Eta, Mathu, Eta, Eka, 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 Eka.
Left Hand, Is Not Able To Reach It.
E, Eka, 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 Eta. Here, Eka, 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 Eta.
Signal, Come To The Right Hand, Come On, You Help Me.
Yepredu, Barla, Sucha, Eta, Eka, 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 Eka. Mathu, Eto, Sucha, Eta, Mathu, Eka, 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 Eka.
At such a point, They, Jilla, I Can't Reach It.
Jilla, Eta, Sthalam, Ero, Jilla, Eta, 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 Eka, Eka, Eta. Enta, Sare, Eka, Eta, Eta, Eta.